Dr. Robinson?
Press Robinson, I'm a professor and administrator in the Southern University System. I spent forty-two years at Southern. And in the meantime, I also spent twenty-two years and a half as a member of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. And unfortunately, I had to give up my school board seat because I was asked to go to New Orleans to service Chancellor at Southern University at New Orleans. And that's where I left the board and always enjoyed my service.
Thank you so much for your service. Caitlin?
Hey, Caitlin Joshua with the Power Coalition for Equity and Justice. I am the South Louisiana Organizer. I come into this space as a product of EBR schools. This impacts my child, impacts our life, and so I'm super excited to throw down on redistricting with all of you.
Hi, I'm Evelyn Ware Jackson. I represent District Five in, on EBR School Board. And I've been on the board since 2010. And I've had some interesting experiences on the board, especially within the last six to eight months.
Yes, yes, and, and, and yes, and I know you eager to go into some details about that. So I already did a recap of the last redistricting roundtable. Go check it out, it's on my YouTube page. If you're watching on Facebook, you can also find it there on Facebook in the playlist Roundtables. What we're going to do now is get into the history of redistricting of East Baton Rouge Parish School Board from a plaintiff's perspective, in particular, Press Robinson's perspective, if you would.
Well, I guess prior to nineteen eighty, the school board operated on award systems, Ward One, Two, and Three. And school board members were elected award-wide. I first sought election to the school board in nineteen seventy-two from Ward Two. Ran against D.O. Claudia from Baker, who was white, lost to him. Ran against them again in nineteen seventy-six, also lost to him because whites outnumbered blacks in Ward Two. And of course, I got quite a few white votes, but not enough. Prior to that, A.C. Belton from Scottlinville, Claire May Ward from South Baton Rouge, and others had sought election to the board as well. Of course, none of them were successful. In nineteen seventy-three, Coach Melvin Geller, who was a board member from Ward One, died. Governor Edwin Edwards appointed Lawrence Moke to fill that position. And of course, since there was more than a year left on the term, a special election had to be held to fill the position. So Moke served from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen seventy-four, ran for the board from that seat and lost the election to Herbert E. Hatzell. Well, at that point, I mean, it was clear to all of us that blacks were not going to ever be elected to the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board as long as they were operating on a ward-wide system. Now, back in seventy-two, Dr. D.R.C. Bryant, A.C. Belton, and myself, and, and a couple of others, had filed suit already against the board and the state of Louisiana. But the real suit came about in nineteen seventy-four after Lawrence Moke lost that election. Because we were absolutely certain at that point that it was never going to happen unless we had single-member districts. So we filed that suit in October the tenth, nineteen seventy-four. The Justice Department joined the suit on August seventeenth, nineteen seventy-six. And, you know, it takes a while to get things to happen in the courts. So from seventy-six until eighty, it was bouncing back and forth between the federal district court in Baton Rouge and the U.S. Fifth Circuit Court of Appeals in New Orleans. In nineteen seventy-seven, Representative Richard Turnley and Representative Joe Delpit was able to convince the legislature that they should be approving a law that required all school board members to be operated from single-member districts and to be elected simultaneously for four-year terms. The old system was that board members were elected for six years. Their elections were staggered. One-third of the board was elected every year. They said that was to maintain continuity. But we didn't think that was the way to go. And so between our suit, the federal court, and the state law, the board in East Baton Rouge Parish decided June, around June of nineteen eighty, to enter into a consent decree that called for twelve single-member districts in East Baton Rouge Parish. Now, let me just indicate that there was a consent decree in two thousand and three, but that was for the D-Seg case. The D-Seg case is totally different from the redistricting case. And as far as I know, the consent decree from June sixth ordered by Judge John V. Parker is still in effect. I don't know what that should have had any effect or not on the reduction of members from eleven to twelve. Now, some people are currently proposing that we have a fifteen-member board. And I just want to say that for two years following nineteen eighty, the board operated with fourteen members. Let me tell you how that happened. There were twelve members on the board. The consent decree created three additional districts from predominantly black areas. Well, when you add three to twelve, of course, you get fifteen. But the reason that we were at fourteen because Wally Wells decided that on June the thirtieth of nineteen eighty, that he would resign from the board or retire. Because he was being put into a district from which Frank Milliken ultimately got elected. I think he saw the handwriting on the wall. And so he says, okay, I'm just going to go ahead and get off the board. But then actually, for a month and a half, we operated with fifteen board members. Because Joan Houghton ran against Randall Goodwin, beat him in the election in nineteen eighty. And, you know, his term did not end until December thirty-first, nineteen eighty. And so she, Eva, Frank, and I was given permission by the court to be on the board at the same time. That gave us fifteen members. And we operated with that fifteen members until, you know, nineteen, December nineteen eighty. At that point, then we had to all regroup ourselves. And at December thirty-one, nineteen eighty-two, the consent decree and the twelve members' districts went into effect because we could only, in nineteen eighty, run for two-year terms. I was elected September the thirteenth, nineteen eighty. Eva and Frank was in a runoff and was elected in November. That gave me the distinction of being the first black to be elected to the school board. I served several years. And then Sarah Averyne Prescott, who was president of the board, passed away. And I became the first black to be elected vice president of the board. And then in nineteen eighty-five, I was elected as the first black president of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. I served two years and then someone else took over. But in nineteen ninety-six, I served again as president of the board and the two years following that. So three terms, I served as president of the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have, but I think my five minutes is probably up.
You're doing amazing. I'm sure everyone wants to hear what you have to say. I'm gonna check on Facebook a little bit. I don't see any, any questions. Anybody that's with us in the Zoom platform have any questions? And, and I saw you, I saw your request, I'm sorry. And I saw your request for me to put on a closed caption. You're gonna have to chat me and tell me how to do it. I've seen that before in, in my classes and I went and looked at my settings. And it says I should be able to do it, but I just don't see how to turn it on. So just letting you know, Ms. Patton, I didn't ignore you. I just help assist to figure it out. All right, but did anybody have any question at this moment for Mr. Robinson? Okay, thank you.
I do, I do want to say that when I left the board, there were four black members. And I think that we're still there, right, at that point? Even though our, our population has shifted. And it seems like to me we ought to be at a much higher level than four black members now.
Yeah, four, four out of nine, yep. And we are proportionate, we have a higher, we are proportionately, we are the majority in the district as residents. So that's, you know, that's odd.
I have a quick question for Professor Robinson. Was there any discussion of increasing the number of wards as opposed to just moving to a single-member district system? Like, for those who don't know, the wards, if I'm remembering correctly, one ward was the city limits. And then the other two wards were divided between the parish, I mean, just at large, it's sort of north and southeast.
That's correct.
Yeah. And so was there any discussion about increasing the number of wards? And was that looked into to see if that could also have been used to increase the majority representation?
I do not remember that conversation being had at all. We were looking at the one man, one vote and making sure that we got a chance to get elected. We thought single-member districts was the way to go. So no other possibilities were, were entertained at that point.
Okay, thanks.
Dr. Robinson? I have a question regarding this consent decree. In one of the workshops, you asked if, if the board had considered contacting those that were involved in the consent decree. And what, what should the board have been looking for with regard to the consent decree? Is there a particular section that we should look at?
Well, you know, Ms. Ware, I'm not sure. I just know that the consent decree calls for twelve single-member districts. Beginning in nineteen eighty-two, December thirty-first, nineteen eighty-two, the board shall have twelve single-member districts. And I don't know just what legal ramifications there are in that document. As far as I know, there have been no changes in that document over the forty-plus years or so. And, and, and people, somebody told me the other day, well, it's been forty years. Well, yeah, it was forty-plus years that the D-Seg suit in Baton Rouge was filed. You know, it was filed in nineteen fifty-six. And we didn't solve it until, what, two thousand and three? So I don't think that, that's a, a problem. But I just don't know what effect it should have had. But as far as I know, nobody asked me or either the other plaintiffs if we, we agreed with that downsizing of the board. And I'm trying to find out from the legal community whether or not there should have been some difference to that consent decree before that, that reduction was done.
Okay, thank you. I don't, I don't recall any, any conversation around the consent decree this whole time I've served.
You know, and it's a legal document. I mean, it was ordered by a judge, federal judge, Judge John V. Parker.
Copy over here. So Leonard Ray asked, what did the consent decree require? Apparently, they dropped it in two thousand and three. And so based on the honest thesis, I don't know if that term rings a bell. But he's, oh, Kate, this is Kate. But he's not a hundred percent, not a hundred percent sure. Does any of that ring a bell?
Well, I don't think, go ahead, go ahead, Tanya.
Oh, I was just gonna say, it sounds like the same confusion between the consent decree with the single-member districts and then the versus the D-Seg suit.
Correct, correct.
Yeah.
And to my dear friend, Fran, who Chad, who gave instructions on the closed caption. And I haven't able to, I think, though now the problem is I'm in the middle of a meeting. And so next time, we'll have it, okay? But thank y'all so much for being helpful on that. I, I, I wish I was able to do it, but I'm just letting y'all know. Let's see, and that's the only.
And Madam Chairwoman, I got one question. I got one question for Dr. Robinson. Just knowing that he's at this point a walking encyclopedia. His history is probably more averse than anybody here tonight, right? So, like, what? I mean, have you seen this fight before? Because I know, you know, you come in, in, in this in a historical sense. We look at African-Americans just starting to get their rights in the system. So is this, does this remind you of anything? And if, if it does, how did you work past that?
You know, Eugene, I said a little bit earlier before you came on that the more things change, the more they seem to stay the same. This fight has been going on for a long, long time. And it doesn't seem like we're making any progress. I mean, we just fight the same fight over and over and over again. And that fight is to make sure that there is adequate and proper represent, equal representation based on population and the one-man-one-vote concept. That is not happening. And there are people out there who are doing things that are restricting that process even more than what we have seen in the past. So that's what I mean when I say the more that things change, the more they stay the same. The process has changed, the way they're doing it has changed, the results are the same.
Thank you, Dr. Robinson, appreciate that.
Where are you next, Dawn?
I think she is.
Yeah, she froze a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay, there's so much going on, baby. Look, left the charger in the office, all is well. I switched to my cell phone, glad everybody is still with us. All right, talk about judgment. All right, so we still, usually if there's a disconnect, like a technical problem, like internet, it keeps going. So it looks like we still good. Facebook, to make sure we're still streaming. And I apologize. All right. But we lost our, looks like we lost our, our immersive room. But we still, we still good to go. All right, so I apologize for judgment quite a bit today. I've been up and at 'em since six o'clock this morning. And so let's move forward with Tanya. Was everybody finished with the questions that folks had for Mr. Robinson, Professor Robinson? I said Professor Robinson and then he said, he, he, he took off that professor. And he took off that doctor. And I should have clarified, what is it you prefer, sir?
Just Press Robinson's good enough.
Okay, yes, sir, with respect. All right, so Tanya, you have some thoughts that you want to share as well and some factual information.
Right, yeah, so part of the thing that I think is complicating our effort to try to get good representation now is the Citizens United decision in twenty-ten, which isn't getting a lot of discussion. But I think we all see the effects of, of that court case, not only in our school board elections, but certainly, you know, across our country. And for those who are unfamiliar with it, the Supreme Court decision in the Citizens United case eliminated laws that had for a hundred years limited the amount of campaign contributions allowed in our elections. And now corporations and other interests can spend as much as they want. And we have seen that, those campaign contributions especially flood into our school board elections. That's been in conjunction with pro-privatization laws, No Child Left Behind, as well as Race to the Top, which encouraged charter schools, which is a privatization method. I like to point out that charter school boards are governed by unelected boards. Their, there's, their boards are appointed and they serve at the pleasure of the charter management organization, which regardless of whether it's profit or nonprofit or for-profit, profits. And so it becomes another means of voter suppression. We start switching to that model as it's currently authorized into Louisiana law. So right after Citizens United, well, that, that decision, we also see the effort to begin to reduce the number of school board members and, and increase the size of the districts. And I think those larger districts make them more susceptible to the influence of those campaign contributions. Because it's much more difficult for someone who is disinterested in appeasing the largely white billionaires who profit from privatized, the privatized model. It's much more difficult for them to run an election that can beat that money, right? And so we see the immediate, the Citizens United occurred, the decision was, I think, in January of twenty-ten. And this EBR school board downsized from twelve to eleven members that March, ahead of the twenty-ten election. And Doc, Professor Robin said it's hard for me to just call you Press, I'm sorry. What's interesting is that he points out that now, that they might not have even had a legal standing to downsize these even from that twelve to eleven, that there may be a, a different, a problem with that, considering that the consent decree was in place mandating that there be at least twelve single-member districts in the East Baton Rouge Parish School Board. We also see it downsize again following, as soon as the Shelby County versus Holder decision occurred in twenty-thirteen, the following year, just a few months before the twenty-fourteen election, the school board was downsized again from eleven to nine. And I would say that that, that reapportionment was unjust for a variety of reasons, including the fact that it didn't accurately represent, represent the racial makeup of the school, the school system boundaries, that there were too few majority-black districts on that plan. And then the other thing I think is really interesting that I learned is I was trying to sit down and prepare my presentation to explain to people why my position in this redistricting fight was the only, like, for me, no nine-single-member plan is acceptable for a couple of reasons. The, the influence of money in districts that large and the fact that we shouldn't have a nine-member plan to begin with. It's not the starting point because it never should have been allowed. It wouldn't have been allowed if Shelby County versus Holder was still in place. But the other thing I learned is I was trying to explain to people that justification, oh, let me stop. I'm sorry, I do this all the time. Eleven was, right, the good decision was eleven single-member districts. A better one was twelve single-member districts because that was the number we had in place before, Citizens United decision and the effort to reduce the number of members. And then the best one would be fifteen single-member districts. And I was looking for research for that fifteen single-member districts and discovered that actually, back in the day, there was standard practice to increase the number of school board members in order to maintain a comfortable ratio between elected officials and constituents. And so in nineteen seventy-one, the school board actually added a member in order to maintain a population of one elected official to about twenty-three thousand, and I think seventy-six constituents. And so if we increase to fifteen, and fifteen is the maximum number allowed under statute, so there, obviously, that's on, on the, in the laws, in order to allow for these increases as population increased, then we would be closer to that twenty-three thousand number. It would bring us down to about twenty-five thousand. And so I just think people really need to look at that understanding of the way in which the money, the moneyed interests realize the things that will help them maintain their wealth and power, and they start manipulating that system and the information that is readily available. And so that historical precedent of increasing the number of members on one of our elected bodies in order to keep pace with the population increases has been forgotten. And we just need to remind folks of that. St. Tammany Parish has fifteen school board members and it's an A-rated district. So you know that the business community, when the Baton Rouge Area Chamber was pushing for the reduction from eleven to nine, they kept arguing that, oh, we need, we need fewer members, works more effectively, right? And that's just not, that's just not, it's held up by the data and the information out there. And so I'll pause there and let people ask questions where I need to clarify some things.
Okay, and then I see a question in the queue. But let me ask you this, and I'm coming to that question that's in the queue. Well, let me make this comment. When you talk about the money, it is, it is more common, it's not always, but it is more common for black candidates to have less money than white candidates typically, yeah.
If they're not getting supported by the super PACs funded by the billionaires, you mean? Because at this, as you know, two of the black school board members, one of them, the super PACs funded one of their races to the tune of a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, right? And the other one, a hundred thousand dollars. So at this point.
And we go, and I, I do have colleagues to work with, so we're not saying names. People can pull campaign financial reports if they would like.
They can go read my little twenty-three-page treatise if they would like, how's that?
Yes, ma'am. Look, you, you speaking the truth, you're not telling a lie. But I, I, I do have to work with folks to get things done. So I'm letting them know I'm being respectful, okay?
And look, let me say something, too. There's been lots of instances where people get elected, you know, the business community approaches them and tells them, you know, the, the pretty story, right? To encourage them to run. And, and it sounds good, like that narrative sounds good. And so they get elected with the help of that kind of, you know, financial interest money. But that doesn't necessarily, once they get in there, they can often, often discover.
I've seen that.
And so Carolyn Hill is a primary example, right? Carolyn Hill was on Bessie, was elected to Bessie with the support of the business community. And when she realized the problems with the, the proposals they were encouraging, she became a strong advocate for traditional public schools. Unfortunately, she, she, through a dirty tactic, you know, lost the, her reelection. But, you know, so I don't, that's, it's, you know, it gets a little.
Yeah. Again, it's, it's stating facts, not an attack on anyone, but it is facts relevant to your overall point. And so then the question in the queue actually just simply is from a case that, the question is, is there a separate lawyer for the administration versus the board? So there's one general counsel and a general counsel is hired by the board members. All right, and then we have something that's a particular issue or something that goes to court. Because there's lots of legal issues that come up on, in a day-to-day basis. And so that's the purpose of the general counsel. I'm explaining a little bit more because some people don't necessarily know and understand that. And so purpose of the general counsel is that legal stuff comes up all the time, many times throughout a single day. And then, and so that's what general counsel is there for. And then as special circumstances come up, then we reach out to special counsel or specialists in, in subject matter, if you will. I want to go ahead and give my colleague Evelyn, thank you. They didn't have any other questions, Tanya, just to make you know.
I think Press has a question, and I don't know.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Press. I know, I had it on my phone, so go ahead.
Ms. Nyman, which of those court decisions gutted Section Five of the Civil Rights Act?
Well, that would be Shelby County versus Holder because it essentially declared Section Four, which established the formula. And look, I'm repeating what Alfreda Tillman Bester has taught me, right? So Section Four was gutted, was, they kicked it back and said Congress has to update Section Four, the formula that they use to determine who has to be subjected to preclearance. And so it's, it's kind of, I'm being, the whole Voting Rights Act has not been gutted, but preclearance. And so it, it's kind of, uh, I'm being, the whole Voting Rights Act has not been gutted, but preclearance has been gutted.
But my, my point, my point for asking that question is that if what the school board here is doing or has done, had to be pre-cleared, it would not have been pre-cleared. And they would not have done it. So section five, gutted, is a very important point.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for raising that. Uh, thank you for raising that point. Okay, and so then, as I was saying, uh, my colleague on the board, Evelyn Webb Jackson. Uh, been fighting a good fight, uh, with redistricting, um, asking real hard questions. And I know she has her own unique perspective on how things are playing out. And, uh, she reached out to me this morning, cause I do roundtables all the time. Uh, and this is part two of the subject matter of redistricting, uh, East Baton Rouge Parish School System, uh, this, this time around. And so, I was glad to get a text from her this morning saying, hey, I wanna, I wanna be on there. So, uh, I'm adding her to the agenda for her to have a few minutes to, uh, share things that, her insight as she has experienced in this, uh, this process. Evelyn?
Well, you know, um, I come from a background of community development and, uh, parental engagement. Cause you know, I have three, three children that graduated from, uh, EBR schools. And, uh, I worked a lot in the neighborhoods with, you know, economic development programs and things of that nature. And, um, long back in, uh, whenever, two thousand nine or ten, you know, we campaigned. Uh, I had a few people in my neighborhood and in my group, kinda twist my arm about running for school board when there was an open seat. Uh, I had never imagined, you know, never was really a, a board watcher. And, um, except for things that were pertaining to my children's school. So, you know, regular parent, um, deep in the neighborhoods, trying to improve things. And, um, so, you know, I did it, I, um, I ran and, uh, and won. But you know, um, I was pretty proud that, um, that, um, I was endorsed by the Chamber of Commerce. Because, you know, I've been working in economic development for quite a while. And, you know, didn't know any history about anything, uh, as far as if there was any kind of influence that was negative or, or positive. So, coming onto the board, you know, I, I was basically a, a new learner, right? So, um, and, um, you know, they, they never, never asked me to vote a certain way or, you know, try to influence anything. Uh, so, you know, I found it odd, you know, that, that people were up in arms about the Chamber of Commerce and, uh, and you know, they're, they're, uh, they're still my, my friends, you know, uh. But you see, I, I am not extreme, um, I'm not a political, um, I, I don't know what, what you'd call it, and, and extremists, I mean, I, I don't, sometimes the, the, you know, I'm not watching for who's voting which way. And, uh, you know, I've never, never really particularly cared about the political parties, basically, uh. Both of them have problems, right? But at any rate, um, uh, ran as a, a Democrat. And, um, you know, it's, it's been really interesting through the redistricting process. In that, um, when we switched in twenty fourteen. Uh, I was on the board in twenty twelve when that plan passed, but there wasn't a whole lot of discussion. Or, you know, in, in-depth review of, um, of what that was truly about. You know, as far as, you know, we needed to have it submitted to the DOJ and all, and, uh, you know, we basically did that. Um, I don't recall a map or the, you know, like the, the demographic sheet discussed in, in length, but, um, I do remember on the agenda, like the different precincts. And so not a whole lot of detail. Uh, fast forward to, uh, twenty fourteen. There was, um, a lot of, we had, we had just been hit with act one and all of those changes. You know, that really took away a lot of the power of the board. And, uh, really kind of focused on, uh, teacher tenure and things like that. And, um, then maybe the following year, there was this, this threat about, uh, being downsized to a seven-member board with, uh, two at large. And, uh, you know, to me, that, that was, that was pretty frightening, you know? Um, you know, and I, I took that as a, a serious threat. Uh, so, the board had some conversations, uh, around, well, maybe we should voluntarily downsize from, um, we were, well, it looked like we were, uh, at eleven, we looked like we were a six-five board. And, um, but looking at the demographics from the, uh, twenty twelve piece that went into the DOJ. We, we were six-five. We had five solid white, five solid black, and one white district, uh, District eleven. That was beginning to turn, you know, it was getting a pretty high ratio of, uh, black population. And, um, so when we worked in twenty fourteen downsizing. To this day, I'm looking in board docs, I'm looking, trying to find in the archives, what kind of information we had as a background. Or what our foundation was that we were working through. And, um, I haven't, I haven't found what the foundation really was. But in lots of conversations, um, you know, I talked to board members. And, you know, and I would say things like, well, you know, I, I don't understand what the, what the, the big argument is. If we're moving from a six-five to a five-four board, you know, it's the, the same ratio. And, um, but nobody would ever talk about the true demographics of what we were moving to. And, uh, it wasn't until this summer, in, uh, August. When we had waited for maybe six or seven months for a committee, uh, that was set up to handle redistricting, to do an RFQ for, uh, redistricting. Uh, came before us and, you know, it looked like, from what we could see, the committee, the committee's recommendation was, you know, like a no-brainer, right? You know, so I don't think anybody on the board. Well, maybe, maybe, maybe some, but, uh, this board member didn't see any alarms on that. Uh, because it, it looked pretty straightforward. I mean, they, they worked on it for months and, and, uh, the reason, you know, we didn't even have to do an RFQ, because the, the amount wasn't enough to warrant an RFQ. But, um, basically, the, uh, the script was that, you know, this would add to uh, public, in, public trust and transparency. So, we'll hand this over to a, a committee to choose our demographer. So, we waited and waited and, um, it had been ready for maybe a, a couple of months. But we waited until August and, um, it didn't go through committee of the whole. Which is where you see a lot of the detail and discuss a lot of detail. It went, uh, straight to the, uh, the board, the, the regular meeting. And looking at the backup, you would think that, um, it was pretty straightforward. I mean, they chose the demographer that had forty years of experience. You know, good reputation in, uh, in his work. Um, was the low bid, the lowest bid, and was about twenty-five or twenty-six points above the, the third choice, the, um, the person that, the company that was in last place. And, um, this came to the board. And, um, we got to the item and, you know, we thought, sure, that we don't, we're gonna just pass this, cause it's so obviously the right choice, right? So we got to it and there was a, there was a motion to, um, to hire the third-place company. That was twenty-five or twenty-six points behind. And the person, the company in the middle was about fifteen thousand dollars higher than the first choice. So you see, it looked like the, the obvious choice. You would, you would think, uh, that we would choose what the committee, uh, chose. And, um, we had a board member that was absent. And, um, another board member was asking for, um, someone from the committee to come and, and talk about the, the process and, and what they found. And, um, one person had been there from the committee, but he left early. So, uh, so we kinda basically got railroaded with the, the votes. It was like, okay, you know, we're, we're choosing, uh, I don't even remember the name of the, the company. But it had the same demographer that was used in twenty fourteen. So, when I heard that, you know, I'm thinking, well, you know, what was the, why did, why did we do an RFQ? If, uh, if the board already knew who they wanted to hire, all they had to do was have a discussion with the other board members. And, um, there wouldn't have been anything that would have been suspicious about that. So, um, so, you know, that's when the radar, you know, I, I, I was just seeing red flags everywhere, just my gut was telling me that's something really not good behind this, when this goes down this way. Uh, especially, you know, when something misses committee of the whole, you know, a radar. You know, your antenna should go up. And, uh, so we ended up with, um, with the same demographer that we had in, in, uh, twenty fourteen. And, uh, looking at the board, you know, I could see that, you know, we had new people on the board. And I felt like they were in the same kind of situation that I was in, in twenty fourteen. When we downsized. And I wanted to make sure that we had all of the information that we needed to make a, a decision. Uh, that nothing was being left out, that everybody fully understood what redistricting is about. And I also was asking for a historical view of redistricting. From, at least from twenty-ten through where we are now. To compare the demogra- the, uh, the demographics and, and really get a good look at where we were and how we got to where we are now. And, um, but the demographer basically wanted to talk about malapportionment and just basically making little tweaks here and there to make the numbers right. And, um, that really didn't sit well with me because it seemed like that's what we did before. And there wasn't enough information, um, to really make an, a, a, a really educated decision about this. So I sort of, you know, dug my heels in around not wanting to meet with the demographer to start looking at maps. Because I thought it was a, uh, skipping a couple of steps. And, uh, so I was asking that this information be presented in, um, in a public meeting. Either, uh, committee of the whole, or we could really take a deep dive, or at a regular board meeting, or even, you know, a workshop, any, anything. Just as long as the information came before the public and all of the board members fully understood what the task was and the history and why, why we're doing this. Uh, so I got a lot of pushback and, um, but, you know, I, I, and most of the board members had already met with the demographer. And, you know, basically, maybe designed a map or at least tweaked their territory or, you know, gave some kind of input. But, um, I didn't want to do that, uh, until we got to a board meeting. So, um, one of the board members thought he would help with the situation and asked the demographer, you know, what was the problem, uh, was there anything that, that he could do to, um, to help with answering any questions I might have? And, um, I think the next day, they sent in a letter of resignation. Basically saying that they, uh, they couldn't work with us because some board members were not cooperating, you know? Uh, so, uh, but, you know, I, I've, I told them that I would be happy to start working on maps. Once all the information that I was requesting be presented in a public meeting. And, um, but that didn't happen, so, um, you know, I don't know the, 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 I don't know what they would say about resigning or, except for, you know, they, they couldn't get certain board members to cooperate and, and come and, uh, draw maps, but that was.
Well, but Evelyn, remember part of that, 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 they mentioned that as one sticking point in their letter. But they also made reference to never having been sued on the section two. Which I thought was in their resignation, in their, uh, rescinding of the contract letter, so. So they had, you know, they mentioned that they didn't get to meet with everybody, but they also mentioned never having been, uh, sued, so.
Hmm, and that may have been.
So, to my knowledge, nobody made threat, to, to my knowledge, nobody made threat of, of a section-two lawsuit, but I guess they were, uh, proceeding.
As, as far as I know, nobody made threats, but in my conversations with them, or, uh, or perhaps in the, the email exchange. I, um, I said that I wanted to be sure that we were doing things, you know, uh, above and beyond the call of duty, so to speak. And, uh, because, you know, you don't wanna get sued, right? So, uh, so maybe, maybe that's why I threw that in there. But, um, at, at any rate, uh, they left. And, um, I asked to have the item returned to the next meeting. Which was committee of the whole, so that we could really take a deep dive and look at those, because it had missed committee of the whole in August. Then we got this other demographer hired, then they resigned. So, as soon as they resigned, we had a meeting the following week. So I requested that the, uh, the item be placed back on the agenda. And the item was to, um, approve or a- approve the recommendation of the redistricting committee. And their, their recommendation was data center. Uh, so it came back to the table and, uh, again, there was just a push not to use this demographer. And, uh, um, you know, sometimes when you can't find anything wrong with somebody's work. You start trying to find, you know, try to attack character. And so we went through that, you know, we had board members pull, um, some article about, um, um, somebody.
You know what I thought was, you know what I thought was cute about that? It was said, I, I don't, I don't wanna do this. It was this, it was like this humongous stack of papers. But you prepared to go through a big old stack of papers of, uh, a, a personal attack.
Well, yes, I just wanna remind too, that the way in which they were trying to expedite, expedite that timeline. All of that was wrapped up with the effort to have a decision by, uh, they were gonna have a special meeting between Christmas and New Year's when they adopted the new map. Do y'all remember? And they all had to submit your maps the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, when everybody was off of school. So you would have effectively had the decision made before Thanksgiving. And then, very little public input, very little, um, overview of all of this information that has come out about the history behind the board. And so I, I certainly think that the problems all around the demographer selection were wrapped up in that effort to try to rush through these maps so that they could maintain the same inequitable system without too much public review. And so, um, I, you know, thank you to both of you for, I, I know, you know, I don't know all the ins and outs. But I know that if it hadn't been for, like, voices like yours on the board at that time, preventing that expedited timeline. You know, uh, we still have a lot of work to do ahead of us, nothing is assured, but we wouldn't have been anywhere, you know? We would have had nothing to do. We would have no hope.
And just to remind people, this is part two. Uh, some of what, uh, Tanya and, uh, my colleague on the board is sharing right now is mentioned. Uh, with, in part one, and, and I'm, and I'm sure that Evelyn is gonna go ahead and explain some things that are past, what happened in part one in terms of the process now. Evelyn, you wanna go ahead and, and share that?
In terms of the process now, things that?
Yeah, yeah, you, you got us caught up. Uh, and so then, um, to be more specific. Then, um, how do you feel about, um, how we got to our last? our last, to to this past Thursday and then moving forward beyond Thursday?
Yeah, I like the plot thick. Yeah, um, you know, this, the whole process has been so strange. Uh, you know, from since since August, you know, we got, we had a demographer that left. And then we got another one hired, which was, you know, odd because he was the highest price. And um, um, didn't, didn't do some of the things that were in the RFQ. Uh, in particular, um, there was something that was requested from the board that the demographer have a diversity partner. And um, uh, which was kind of odd, you know, in that data center was already is as about as diverse as you can be, you know? And and I have to uh, say that I didn't know whether data center was a black owned company or or not. You know, when I looked at the, at the information, so I really couldn't understand why they didn't want data center. But it, it didn't occur to me that, you know, that it had to do with the, with this race, you know? Uh, because his qualifications were top notch.
And then Evelyn, if you don't mind me in interjecting that, uh, unlike our normal process of uh, RFQ, you know, RFP processes, or even just votes on general, on contracts or charter schools or what have you. The, in this particular process, the the bidders were told they couldn't talk to us. And so part of why you didn't know who who what, who this one was and that one was is that uh, is that aspect.
Right, there was, there was some things in the uh, in that RFQ that were different from from others. And and that was like the the main thing, you know, that they were not to to communicate. And um, so, you know, nobody ever contacted me um, before the vote. You know, to uh, to let me know they were, you know, they were uh, they were the ones that were uh, that were applying. Uh, so you know, everything looked pretty fair as far as the um, the applicants. But um, in looking at the RFQ, there was some steps that EBR missed in the process. And uh, so, you know, I was having this conversation around, well, if, you know, if we have certain things in a contract. Aren't we obligated to do the things that we say that we're going to do in a contract? And not just hold the applicants um, liable for, you know, responsible for doing their part. Uh, so that was a a muddy conversation there. Uh, but needless to say, you know, um, where we are now um, is you know, it's, to me, it's, it seems like complete chaos and it's been orchestrated to be that way. From the beginning, the the board really, you know, didn't make any decisions around um, what we were, what our goals were, you know, as far as, you know, was it a certain number we were looking for? What were some of the rules? Just, you know, a few general things that that are normally uh, there, you know, around. Well, you know, we talked about uh, the importance of keeping neighborhoods together, you know? Keeping things intact and making sure that the numbers were right as far as the the malapportionment and things like that. Um, but you know, there were some details that um, I'm I'm learning that the the board really should have been making as far as what we're using to calculate numbers. You know, and that jumped around from two or three things, you know? Uh, at one point, it was, there was, and and on some of these maps and and sheets, you'll still see no part black mentioned in there. And uh, so you know, there was a lot of confusion around what we were going to use to derive the numbers. Um, you know, one week we were talking about one thing, the next one we were saying something else. And and even up to the last meeting, um, the demographer was saying, well, I've decided, I've made a decision that you know, I'm going to use um, what is it, non his, to 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 describe blacks, uh, non Hispanic. Um, how does that go? It's it's so many of, I've gotten them mixed up.
Well, it was a um, if you don't mind me um, interjecting, because I'm also paying attention to the time. Um, he he, well, you said it already, there was a lot of back and forth. Well, not even back and forth, there was a lot of changing of how uh, the demographics would be counted and regarded. Uh, with no firm decision from the board. Um, and then right before it it was time for us to uh, say what plans we wanted. I had the last public forum, um, the consultant said, hey, we're going to go ahead and use the the labels that follow DOJ guidance. And so then uh, yes, and and Kate had a question too. Yes, Eugene, go ahead.
No, I'm sorry, I would, I would just, I would just saying, uh, I wanted to be after Kate, I didn't want to interrupt.
Okay, all right, so Kate, what, you raised your hand, did you want to unmute? Because you didn't type a question, so you want to unmute? Or do I need to unmute you? Let me see. A lot of talk, can you talk now?
Can you hear me now?
Yep, yep, yep.
Okay, I am not Leonard Rex, um, but, and I am not a cat, uh, but uh, a couple of things, I just want to say, I really appreciate all the people that have put in effort into the redistricting this year. I know that my uh, students are aware of redistricting for the school board in a way that they have not been, to my knowledge, ever in the past.
Oh, wow.
And um, and I mean, it it's just a recognizing that the more districts that you have, uh, the more representative it is, because if you keep taking away districts, you're just going to be back to that, uh, you know, one uh, you know, electing one, electing people uh, from a entire constituency. Where um, whoever is the minority in the constituency is going to face an uphill battle. Um, and so more districts are generally almost always more representative. Um, so that's one thing. Uh, the other thing is, uh, I um, I don't think there's any problem. I just wanted to say, I I don't think it's that, just that it's the Chamber of Commerce. I think there was money coming in, um, and funding coming in, uh, in large amounts, was my impression. Uh, that, and that was more of what I think I objected.
Yeah, that's This I wrote, so you have
And I want to read your treatise.
Yeah, Michael Bloomberg, John Arnold.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I thought it was Bloomberg.
Yeah, and um, there's a lot more too, Reed Hastings, I mean, there's uh, uh, I don't the Steve Jobs widow, I've forgotten her first name, but you know, yeah, there's a whole cadre of a lot of um, special business interests.
Yeah, I, and I don't want to be hypocritical, it's I like Michael Bloomberg's money for some things. But school boards are so local, it seems absurd to me that somebody from New York City is funding
It's the real estate.
And and that, and that, it's hard to hold them accountable now because the money does, you know, it's hard to track.
Okay, so look, let me go ahead and move us along. Um, Evelyn, you got
And silence me.
One minute to give us uh, any, any final thoughts on what you were just saying, so I can go ahead and let Caitlin and Eugene share a few words from from commu, from, you know, their view as community uh, advocates.
Okay, there was something I I I don't think I mentioned this when I was comparing those two, did I tell you that the um, where we came from in in uh, twenty twelve? You know, I I I mentioned how we we lined up like six, five with five, five and and one that was a swing. Well, when we went to twenty fourteen, what I didn't see until August was that we really went from a six, five to um, a five, three and one. Five white majorities, three black majorities. And one swing, so-called swing district, or one that could have gone anyway. Um, and uh, so when I, when I recall saying, you know, in 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 conversations with some of my other board members, you know, I don't see what the big deal is about going from six, five to five, four. And the, you know, in hindsight, the air would leave the room, you know? But nobody would would um, would say anything more about that, you know? Well, you know, that's, that's what really uh, um, got me a a bit upset, you know? Because I didn't want the the board that's seated now with new board members to not have all the information in front of them. And um, to make, you know, to make a decision. So uh, and and I'm, and I know, you know, I I'm pretty sure that's why there was so much pushback for for bringing all of that stuff to the to the forefront. Um, and and also with um, the the plans that we have right now. Um, you know, and looking at the the background work, we were supposed to recommend plans. You know, there was a date for plans to be recommended by the board, which was, I think, uh, Thursday was at the third. And um, we didn't, you know, a few board members recommended plans. But the uh, the the, most of the board would not say which plans were, you know, they, you know, basically silent on that. And you know, and of course, that was that motion to just move everything to be advertised. You know, so it it kind of shortcut some of the work that we were supposed to do. So that the community would have things narrowed down and be able to choose from things that the board members were in favor of and the demographer had properly vetted. And we have not properly vetted uh, most of of these um, plans that are here. So um, you know, we worked with with uh, Dr. Finney to um, to do some of the the work that we had asked our own demographer to do, but you know, he was unsuccessful in doing it. And um, took a whole month to get started on it. After we, you know, we asked him and he said he would, and then, and then there was complaints about why he thought he shouldn't do it. Because it just wasn't part of his process and it was just so much stuff we had to go through to get him to work on uh, demographics that we were asking for. So uh, bottom line is, you know, I I just don't trust a lot of the I just don't trust a lot of the work because there's been so many inconsistencies and uh, double standards.
Thank you, thank you, uh, colleague. And I see, okay. All right, so then Caitlin and Eugene, share uh, well, uh, share your thoughts. I guess Caitlin, you want we, you know, who will unmute first, okay, go ahead.
I can certainly start us off, um, and y'all can tell me, y'all hear me, okay, I got these AirPods in. But um, yeah, so I work for the Power Polish Equity and Justice, but I always like to tell folks that I center community because I'm a part of the community. Born and raised in Baton Rouge, and so this issue of local redistricting is really near and dear to my heart. Um, so Power Polish in partnership with um, N W A C P, Progressive Social Network, Step Up Louisiana, the list is kind of long. We've been meeting for several months around the issue of redistricting on the local level. And out of that has come a pretty robust messaging campaign that strictly illustrates what exactly the community wants. Uh, we've been knocking on doors, hosting informationals and house via Zoom, uh, making calls, sending out text messages to ask folks to join the redistricting process. And helping them understand just exactly what redistricting is, um, because you guys know it's very layered and complicated. And also helping folks get involved as to why they should get involved, right? Um, so right now, we are in the process of launching our own version of the redistricting workshops that will center community impacted persons where we will provide a space for folks to voice their concerns. And we will continue to bring that information back to folks like uh, Ms. Evelyn Ware Jackson, as well as uh, you, Don Collins. Um, we know that we were successful in getting some folks to voice their concerns at the board workshops and give them tools and resources to use their voice and their power at those workshops. But now we want to take it up a notch, uh, because we do know it's a crucial moment these next several weeks before you guys vote on that final map. Uh, we have been using the presentation that Tanya Nyman produced alongside James Feeney. Um, as well as the maps that James provided, uh, the board when asked upon illustrating the eleven single member districts. And we do know that the fifteen single member map is legally the ceiling for EBR Parish. And also have some folks working towards that, like Tanya, who are very um, clear and concise on their messaging around fifteen member single districts. Um, but as for community and the consensus, it's very clear at this point, y'all. Everyone wants an expansion in the amount of single member districts, eleven is that number right now. We've been proposing it via email, we're hoping that the board adopts um, a map such as what uh, Ms. Evelyn Ware Jackson was speaking about a few minutes ago. And we will spend, spend the next several weeks heavily hitting the pavement, sending emails, making calls to board members. And making sure that we get the word out on this, just like we did last week. And so we do know um, that the community, we've been listening to them, we know what they want, we are of the community. And we're very well aware that eleven is the number and we're not going to stop until we get it. And so Eugene, I will certainly uh, yield my time over to you, because I know we have a little bit of time left in the program, but definitely wanted to give you some space.
Yeah, and 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 uh, Caitlin, I would actually follow up on a lot of the things you said. Uh, the community has clearly spoken on what they want. And and that centers around equity. And just to kind of touch back to some of the points that uh, our school board member Evelyn Ware Jackson talked about. Uh, that was some of the mockup in this session. Even when we talk about no parts black, and that takes me back to some of the things that Dr. Robertson talked about when we first started this session. How things just kind of seem to remain the same. And in this conversation, we 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 shied away from race, right? But 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 I think that there's no way to do that at this point, because whenever we have asked for equity, whenever we've had an opportunity to get seats that equal our counterparts, that we can have an issue that looks like the kids deserve, they have figured out what to call us, what name to call us. In addition, I I I've heard people tell us, uh, and I would be remiss if I spoke to the legalities in this or uh, to the the legal things, the legal elements, is the legal, the N W A C P Legal Defense Fund has led the charge on that, our president, Mary, is Dr. J has been standing fast in that process. But when we look at this thing we call equity and 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 just that fairness, we're not asking for anything but fair maps. We're not even asking for an overly aggressive number, just an additional uh, uh, majority seat. And that's a very minimal X, because when we look at fairness, fairness for this district would probably be about eight seats. And we're not asking for that. So when we put all of these things together, it equals just what Dr. Robertson talked about, the same old same old. The same things we've always got. And people this week told me Eugene will be a more of a part of the process, come be a, come be a part of the process. But when I hear that uh, uh, we had a black man that that scored the highest in that process of being this district's demographer and did not even get selected, I can't think of better process, there's only one word that comes to mind, and that's hijacking. And when I think about the nineteen maps that were published, and make it clear, that was a tactic to cloud the air so that people could not choose the best map. People do it in political campaigns all the time, that is a hijacking. So when people do stuff like that, we got to treat them like hijackers. And in this process, I'm with Kate, we can't stop until we get the number that the community has said that they want. And that's not exactly what I think that this uh, I won't say the body, but the Republican members of this body are not hit. Thank you.
Uh, and uh, Madam Vice President, if I don't mind adding, I just want to like reiterate to the audience, it's not too late to get involved, y'all. It, I won't say just beginning, because it's not, we're in the most crucial part of the process and trying to get um, our agency over this work and agency over redistricting. So if you uh, reach out to anybody that's on this panel today, we can get you involved. I mean, get you the tools and resources so that you can use your voice to make um, whatever change you would like to see in your community as it relates to redistricting.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much for that. Um, you all, you addressed what was next to be uh, discussed, which is how folks can get involved. Evelyn, do you want to share the next important uh, date that has been scheduled so far? Evelyn, do you want to share that?
Well, you know, uh, I haven't seen anything written uh, other than the thirtieth of March. You know, I've looked in the email and I've only seen a uh, two meetings, one at five and one at six. You know, I haven't seen the the date for March twenty six, which is a Saturday, which also happens to be election day, you know? Um, we asked the demographer at the last meeting, you know, when we realized that, you know, we've got fifty million maps, right? And and uh, so many of them have never even been seen before or or whatever. So uh, and he he said the only time he's available is for uh, the twenty sixth of March. And um, but uh, I believe that uh, at our board meeting, we asked him um, early on in this process to make himself available at all of our board meetings, including the committee of the whole, and especially the um, the regular board meeting, to give an update on uh, on the progress. So uh, but you know, it's the last time it, we had to remind the um, we had to remind them to put it on the agenda. but you know, it's the last time it, we had to remind the um, we had to remind them to put it on the agenda. Yeah, so uh, we'll have to do a gentle reminder again uh, early. But um, we expect that, uh, I think it would be fair to have him basically go through these maps, since we're putting all of this stuff on the public to do. Uh, most people don't know what the heck they're looking at. And when you pull them up online, you know, it's such a long list and everything is so small, you've got to, you know, really zoom in and and know, it's it's gonna be just about impossible for someone who's not looked at this before to really take a good look and try to figure out what they're looking at. So I think it's really important that we live up to our schedule as far as um, you know, making sure that we vet these maps. And uh, that we get a clear understanding of what's in them, so that um, you know, we know what to look for. Uh, because um, I, you know, I I don't know about, I can't speak for any other board member, but you know, with the experience I've had, I have a very low level of trust at this point. And um, so you know, I'm looking at every number, and and when the numbers look good, I'm checking, I'm checking the maps to see, you know, how the lines look, and you know, where's the split stuff, and and how do you calculate that and and all of that. I don't want any guesses. You know, I want straight math, you know, and I'm asking everybody, you know, with children, whether you have children or you or you're you've got uh, you're an instructor, ask them to watch the math, because we're only talking about two subjects, math and civics. You know, and this is a lesson that we're gonna be living for a very long time, not just ten years, three school board elections. So you know, I'm I'm estimating fifteen years, not ten.
Good, that's an excellent point. Uh, and so um, get involved with uh, Power Coalition and the tools that they have uh, to to educate yourself as well as to uh, organize on your own accord. But it's, it's not about following a one group or another group is saying. Um, be at the the meeting that we are, we that we know for sure is taking place, which is for the final vote of what plan the board will adopt on March thirtieth at five o'clock. Uh, if you have questions or concerns, call your school board member, email your school board member. Uh, my colleague has put her email address in the uh, chat. And uh, and with that, uh, I think we're gonna, yes, yes, I'm listening, go ahead.
I'm hoping that in the final analysis, there's at least a minimum of eleven districts. And that the final plan has a majority of black uh, districts.
That's what the numbers call for.
Yes.
Those are the two important things.
Yeah, and by the way, the fifteen single member map does have, I think, eight majority black districts on it, so it does qualify for that. Um, restore the EBR School Board on Facebook is where I post links to things I I write and try to update people as they're going on too. So if they want to follow that, but Caitlin is the master organizer, so Power Coalition is the place to go when you, when I you know, a reminder to email.
If you remember those two things, then you don't have to worry about those nineteen maps.
Yep.
All right, good points, good points. Thank you all so much uh, for joining me and sharing your thoughts and your wisdom and your knowledge and your expertise. All of my panelists, uh, means the world to me that you were able to join me on this roundtable. And until next time, y'all, thank you.